Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's city council meeting. I would like to invite, where are our Rockaway students? I'd like to invite our Rockaway students in. And I would invite all of you to stand as you're able for the singing of our national anthem, under the accompaniment of the Rockaway Public School Choir, led by Megan Walmsley and Debbie Lotenschläger. Why don't you guys move into the middle so the camera can pick you up, please? Very good, boys and girls. Thank you so much. Very good, boys and girls. Thank you so much for coming in this evening and singing our national anthem for us. You clearly did it with vigor and pride, and we certainly appreciate that. And thanks to all the parents and other supporters who helped make sure everybody got here safely. So take care and enjoy your evening. And as I said downstairs, if you really want to stick around, you're more than welcome to. But if you don't, no offense taken. Thank you so much. Thank you. Bye-bye. It's been moved by councillor Ionitis that the minutes of the regular meeting held March 21st and the special meetings held March 21st and April 11th is mailed to the mayor and councillors be accepted. All in favor? That's carried. Any disclosures of pecuniary interest? None? And any communications? There is none. We'll now move on to presentations. Now, we did have three presentations, but I don't believe any of the folks that were being recognized were able to attend this evening for their volunteer service on some of our advisory committees. So I will just announce them. And if you happen to be here, then please stand up and we'll do the presentation. But Nancy Byrd, who served on our Safe and Healthy Community Advisory Committee from 2013 to 2015. Amanda Huicas, who served on Heritage Kitchener from 2012 to 2014. And Yvonne Donahue, who served on Environmental Committee from 2011 to 2015. And although they weren't able to join us this evening, we'll make sure that they get their certificates. And on behalf of council, just thank them for their years of service to our community. Okay, we'll then move on to our next presentation. And I'd like to invite Sam Best, the president of KW International Children's Game Committee, to introduce the local athletes who participated in the June 2015 Games in the Netherlands, and Sophie Richards to speak on behalf of the athletes. Welcome, Sam.
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. Mayor Verbanovic, members of council, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening on behalf of the KW International Children's Games. The very first ever international children's games were held in Slovenia in June of 1968. The goal of these games was to create an event that would foster a better understanding amongst children of different cultural backgrounds, as well as promoting peace and harmony worldwide through sport. In the past 49 years, the Summer Games have attracted over 45,000 participants, representing 450 cities from over 80 countries from all five continents. The Games are considered to be the largest gathering of young people taking part in sport in the world. In June 2015, the City of Kitchener sent a delegation of eight swimmers from the Rogue Swim Club, along with one coach and one head of delegation, across the pond to represent the city in this fine country of ours. The Games are hosted by Alkmaar, Netherlands. Joining us here this evening are members of the Kitchener delegation that competed in these Games. I would like to introduce them to you now. Please hold your applause until all names have been read. Swimmers Hannah Cornes, Emma Frye, Kate Hinsberger, Sophie Richard, Tyler Careless, Alexander Chai, and Bowen Lin, swim coach Matt Pedersen, and head of delegation Robbie Mulder. Congratulations to all of you. The next Summer Games are scheduled for this coming July to be hosted in New Taipei, City, Taiwan. Planning is well underway to send both a Kitchener and Waterloo delegation comprising a boys' basketball team, a girls' basketball team, swimmers, and table tennis. Once again, we hope to deliver that once-in-a-lifetime experience to our local athletes. In closing, I would like to thank the members of our board, the City of Kitchener, and their staff for their ongoing commitment and support. Staff members Bob Shane and Ashley Purvis have provided assistance over the years in support of this wonderful program. After five and a half years as president and six successful Games under my belt, I recently stepped down from the board to take on a new challenging role in the local sports community, namely that of president and owner of the new KW Senior B Lacrosse Team scheduled to take to the floor in the spring of 2017. My time with the International Children's Games has been very rewarding. As volunteers, we invest our time helping to develop tomorrow's leaders through the provision of sport and recreation programs in the community. We do this with much pride and are rewarded knowing that our community does participate on the world stage of sport, and that as Canadians, we do have a responsibility to be leaders in the promotion of peace through sport all around the world. It now gives me great pleasure to do Sophie Richard, swimmer with the Kitchener delegation. Sophie would like to share with you some of her experiences as an athlete participating in the Alkmaar Games. I thank you for your time this evening.
Welcome, Sophie.
Good evening, Mayor Verbanovic and council of Kitchener. My name is Sophie Richard, and I am one of the eight athletes that represented Kitchener in the 2015 International Children's Games in Alkmaar, Netherlands. This was a once-in-a-lifetime experience that we all enjoyed, and on behalf of all the athletes, I would like to thank you for making this opportunity possible. Some might consider swimming to be an individual sport, but this was truly a team effort and experience, from all the fundraising activities and planning that we did, to the time spent in Amsterdam touring together, and of course cheering each other on during the competition. When we first arrived, I was excited to experience a new country and culture, and the perfect start to that was our canal tour. On the tour, we got to see a lot of the city and how different it was from Kitchener, the first thing being that we were on a canal. The next day, we had the opportunity to go to the Anne Frank House and the Van Gogh Museum. These two places had incredible history, and it is amazing to be able to say I have visited them. The many hours spent shopping in Amsterdam was also a lot of fun. After these two days, we were off to the Games by train through the countryside. We passed by even more canals, and we saw windmills and farms, too. The Games were really fun because we got to compete against so many great athletes and made friendships from around the world. These friendships made and memories shared will last a lifetime. On a final note, I would like to thank the mayor and council once again for making this experience possible, and also Robbie, the head of delegation, for all of her help and hard work leading up to the Games and then joining us. Further thank yous go out to Sam and the rest of the ICG board for their time and commitment, Matt, our coach, and finally, our parents for your ongoing support, encouragement, and most of all, your love. Without all of you, this would have never been possible. Thank you again, and have a great evening.
Well, thank you very much, and let's give our athletes a round of applause. It's, over the years, it's been wonderful to see the various groups of young people who have come before us and have participated in the various Summer and Winter Games. And I know it's always been a phenomenal experience for everyone involved. And as you ably noted, it wouldn't be possible without your coaches, your parents who are so supportive, the ICG board and team that helped make it all happen. And certainly, from a city perspective, we're more than pleased to support it in the small way that we do, and it's great to see all of you have this experience. I do want to take this opportunity, Sam, to thank you for your leadership over the past number of years. Sam first got involved as we were looking to incorporate the International Children's Games and make it their own board, and put in many hours in terms of seeing that happen and in the leadership of the organization over the past number of years. And so on behalf of all of the young people who have benefited from that, as well as our community, thank you for your leadership and involvement over the years. So thank you very much. Thanks, everybody. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you really want to, but if you don't, we totally understand why you might not. Oh, actually councillor Janetski, I think, wanted to say something.
Nope.
Oh, nope.
Point of order.
Okay. Go ahead. Councillor Janetski.
Yes, thank you. Point of order, Mr. Mayor. With all the acknowledgements that have been taking place in the last few minutes for the different groups, I also have a brief acknowledgement I want to make this evening. And this is in regard to councillor Yvonne Fernandez, who is celebrating her birthday today and reaching a special milestone in her life, and want to wish her and I guess council probably as well, happy birthday. It's one of those milestones that ends with zero.
Well, there you go.
And I'll just leave it at that.
Forty, is that it? There you go.
Good guess.
Okay, well, thank you for sharing that, councillor Janetski. Happy birthday, councillor Fernandez. We'll move on now to delegations, and the first delegation is 6A Paul Britton. I'd like to remind delegations that they have five minutes to make their presentations. Welcome, Paul.
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic and council. I'm appearing this evening on behalf of Activa, and with me is President Tony Giofinizio and Larry Mazzio. We're here in support of item five of Finance and Corporate Services report, and that's in connection with the credit refund agreement that was supported by committee. I confirm my understanding that staff have been in communication with council with respect to some fine tuning of the agreement and in response to questions from committee. And those questions surrounded depreciation costs, and there's a 2% indexing that's proposed to be incorporated in the agreement, and then additional liability insurance, which is to be passed on as a class of Activa. I confirm our client's support for staff's recommended approach with respect to those matters that were raised at committee, and we would ask that council support the committee recommendation, and that would be my presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Ionit...no. Yes, you would when the time comes. Councillor Fernandez.
Thank you, Mr. Britton, for coming in, and I appreciate the additional agreements. I think that that addressed both councillor Ionitis's concerns and concerns that I sort of continue to express with regard to depreciation of what we will then assume as our own public pumping stations. So I just wanted to express appreciation for that communication and that work between yourselves and our staff.
Thank you. Okay, great. Thank you. That appears to be all the questions. I stand corrected, actually. This is item five on finance, so I'll ask councillor Davy to bring that item forward, please. Councillor Davy. You can have a seat. Thank you.
Thank you. It's been moved by myself and seconded by councillor Marsh that item five of Finance and Corporate Services be adopted.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. We'll now move on to PSI number one. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming in this evening. We'll move on to PSI number one. Mr. Head is, Andrew Head is here to answer any questions, if there are any. But I'll come to you, councillor Ionitis, to bring PSI recommendation forward. Go ahead.
It's been moved by myself and seconded by councillor Davy. I can't find the item.
PSI number one.
PSI number one.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? That, too, is carried. It's done. Thank you. We'll now move on to our tenders. PSI, sure. It had to do with respect to approval of the GIEC recommendation, planning application 30T-91005 in Ward 1. We'll now move on to tenders. Any questions on the tenders? Councillor Galloway-Seelock.
Yeah, it's not on this specific tender, and I don't know that we do this or not. It is on tenders overall, but it brought to my attention from this first one that we hear, I have a significant surplus on this tender, and it should be the last phase of the project. Is there any way for budget, or do we already do this, where we can get just an Excel spreadsheet of all the positive and negative variances that we have from tenders from the Accelerated Infrastructure Replacement Program? Would that be onerous for staff to just kind of accumulate that list throughout the year and give it to us during budget?
Mr. Chapman.
Through the chair. No, that's not onerous at all. We maintain that list, and so we can certainly circulate that as a part of the budget process.
And that would just be, like, I'm just looking for the accelerated infrastructure piece of it, so, because we have a lot of what appears to be positive improvements or positive tenders coming forward. So this one's almost $370,000, so that, just so that we can see that overall total of what we're up or what we're behind, and whether or not we put that money towards more in the following year, or what we decide to do with that from a council. That would be my recommendation that we get from staff.
Through the mayor. As we're already tracking that information, I'd suggest two things. We can circulate the list as it stands today. That'll be current information, and then make sure that we also bring it back as a budget item.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Gazola.
Yeah, on that project, this phase of the work is $2 million, and it says the total budget for all phases was 2.7. Are there some other parts of this that have already been let go or already done? I'm just trying to figure out what the, what the actual surplus is, and...
And this is on one, sub-one?
On one, yes. It's on the dump freeze.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chapman.
Through the chair, this would have been preceded by the design phase, and so you can see in line D that there is a surplus brought forward from that phase. That's combined with the surplus from the, sorry, previous phase is below line D, current phase is line D, so line E is the cumulative surplus on the project. The only thing that remains is the top coat of asphalt, which would happen next year.
Yeah, the reason I'm asking is, I'm just trying to equate, and I asked Mr. Allen today what we were estimating, a kilometer of work to cost, and we had, the figure I was given was, it was going to be $5 million a kilometer, and I understand this is almost a half a kilometer, and it's coming in around the $2 million mark, or slightly higher than the $2 million. The point I'm trying to make is that we're providing perhaps more than we need to be.
That may be the case in this instance, councillor Gazola, but I also recall many times sitting around the horseshoe where it's gone the other way. Councillor Fernandez.
Yeah, I'm looking at the Kiwanis Park outdoor pool replacement. Am I to understand that this consulting service is, and I think I've asked these kind of questions before, because it seems to me that this 3.5 million is higher than I recollected being from our initial discussions. Now, if it's not, that's fine, but is there no way to sort of build it? No, put it this way. Are we building in the cost of consulting into the budget of the project, or is it outside of that?
Mr. May.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Through last year's budget process, the budget identified for the overall project is 3.5 million, and that includes the consultant fees.
Okay. All right, that's all.
Any other questions on the tenders? Councillor Gazola.
Yeah, just, I was wondering on the tender for Balser Creek, what the budget was for that project. This is, this is, this is just for the design. I wondered how big a job it was.
Who's tackling that one? Mr. Chapman?
Through the mayor. I'm not sure why the total budget's not included in this report. I'll follow up on that, and we can email council that information. It's possible that only the design phase has been budgeted, but I'd like to go back and confirm that.
That's fine. We don't need it tonight. The other question I have is on the hydrovac excavation services. Again, that doesn't show what we had budgeted to do for that type of work, so I was just curious as to what that was.
Mr. Chapman?
Through the chair. In that case, there really is no specific budget. That's a service that we access as needed for construction, for maintenance, across a range of divisions and services, and so that's funded from various operating and capital accounts as we consume the service. So I think the best indication is the previous spend. That's the best representation of what we would anticipate to spend on this contract.
Well, and that, well, that's what I was trying to work out, too, because it says, it says that prices have decreased by 6%. And I was trying, was the, on the previous page, it shows a figure of $490,000. Does that figure include HST? The 490?
We can confirm it, but my understanding is typically that represents the cost to the city, so that would be the cost for the service net of any HST rebates.
Okay, and that's all I was, yeah, if you can confirm that, and then that makes the figure for 445 tie into what you're saying. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, somebody want to move the tenders? Councillor Ionitis, seconded, councillor Fernandez. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. We'll move on to the reports of the committees, Communities and Community and Infrastructure Services. Councillor Galloway-Seelock.
Yeah, it's been moved by myself and seconded by councillor Dave Snyder that number one and two of the committee report be approved, one being traffic bylaw for West Heights Drive, and another being for reporting timeframe from the future Upper Blair Creek State of the Watershed Report.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? There being none. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Moving on to financing corporate services. Councillor Davy.
Thank you. Item five was dealt with. It's been moved by myself and seconded by councillor Sarah Marsh that items one through four and number six are to be approved.
Okay, any discussion, councillor? We have lots of discussion. Councillor Janetski.
I request that item number four we voted on separately.
That's fine. Did you want to comment on it, or? No? Okay. It's fine. Councillor Fernandez.
Yeah, I know that the item number two was a, not a, it was an information item. Last year, there was a lot of concern about that festival. Have we resolved all those issues around that festival?
Yeah, I think we're dealing with that next week.
Okay.
Yep.
Perfect. Okay, thank you for that.
Okay. Councillor Gazola.
Yeah, I wanted four pulled out separately also.
Okay.
And when the time comes, I would like to make a comment.
Okay, this is, would be the time.
And I also have a question on, on item number three.
Okay, do you want to start with your question, then?
Yeah, this, the, the report from JM Drama is being forwarded to the committee, whoever they are that are working on the 2016 Kitchener Arts Action Plan. I'm just curious as to where that stands, where that additional new master plan stands, and when will it be coming to council, and how will we know that this has been taken into account?
Mr. Wilmer. Through the mayor, I can arrange for arts and culture staff to provide that update to council in terms of the process, or where we're at in the process right now, and certainly when the report does come to committee and council, we can point out which aspects of it were influenced by the JM Drama strategic refresh.
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Councillor Gazola, you want to continue on then with your comments on item number four?
Yeah, my comments on number four, I really want to state that I will not be supporting this. I'm really surprised by all the things that we're doing just a few months after we approved the budget. We've, we've given away our public funding. We gave away a half a million dollars to Velocity, which is tied in with the University of Waterloo. We've given away some $300,000 so far, but part which will become 1.5 million to Communitec. Here is another request for another grant for an area that is, in my mind, primarily educational. But again, it's, and now we have, also have a desire on coming to us from the Accelerator Center, which is, again, tied into the university for a substantial grant over the next two or three years. These are all items, none of which were really discussed when we did discuss our budget just two or three months ago. And I feel that although this may well be a tremendous program, this, whatever we're doing at the, at the museum, and it's great, and it's for young people and all that, I think it's, I mean, we're just being asked for too much too often, so I can't support it.
Thank you. Councillor Fernandez.
Yeah, I would like to make a comment on number four as well. And after doing a little bit of research just through our leisure magazine, and I reiterated this, I said this last week, that we really are, I fear we're taking business away from our community centers that are providing some of the maker activities that this is going to be providing. You know, this used to be called skills and crafts and trades, and it came out of our schools, and it came out of parents and, you know, grandparents. Maybe that's not necessarily the case all the time, but in speaking to some teachers and attending a museum of sorts from one of the schools in my ward, I can see that there are oper-
in my ward, I can see that there are opportunities that are happening through our education. And if we start taking that away, then where do we leave the kids who can't go to these, to these maker spaces? It has to be there for everybody, and through the school system and through our community centers, it's there. So I can't support another $50,000 at this present time.
Counselor Schneider?
Thank you, Mayor Vervanevic. I don't see this as giving money away at all. I see it as a great investment. I also see this as something that really enhances what else is going on in our community. It starts innovation at a very young age. It, again, enhances our image as an innovation center, and I'm very proud to support it.
Thank you. Counselor Yonetski?
Yeah, thank you very much. I will not be supporting this, and I outlined my reasons at the committee meeting, that it was more educational and an intent that it should be done by the school boards. In fact, I did mention that I was involved with the science project with the Water Regional and the Wellington District Science Fair at Bingaman just earlier this month. And at that presentation, award winners were presented. There's an article in the paper about it, and then they're off to St. Louis, I think, is for the champions, for the ones who are picked to represent, represent Canada. So basically, it's a school-funded intent that it should be, and, and I think we are going in the wrong direction by putting money into this particular venture.
Thank you. Counselor Etherington?
Through you, Mr. Chair. When I listen to this type of comment, it makes it sound as though we're standing up on the city hall roof, throwing money up into the air. In my opinion, we don't, we're not giving away these funds. We're not handing them over. We are investing and showing some vision in the future of the city, the future of the downtown. And I support and admire this type of vision and investment.
Thank you, Counselor Etherington. Counselor Davy?
Thank you. I wasn't planning to speak to this, but I feel like I have to now. This is a one-time investment, a $50,000, and it's an economic development initiative. I think as society, one thing I don't like about how society's been progressing is we've been a throwaway society. Something breaks, we don't try to fix it, we throw it in the garbage and buy a new one. Because people are afraid of tools, they're afraid of taking things apart, they're afraid of experimenting, they're further afraid of trying to find new ways to do things. This is going, this investment for the people that might be watching at home, it's essentially creating a maker space for boys and girls to start to understand and be comfortable around tools and, and creating things. And not only is that great programming from a recreational standpoint, I think it's a fantastic bit of programming for the inventors and innovators of tomorrow. So this is very much an investment. It's not, it's not wasting money. So I would also ask for a recorded vote, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Marsh?
Thank you. I also was not planning to comment, but feel compelled just to add that this $50,000 investment is not a part of our, should not be a part of our regular budget process. This is from our Economic Development Investment Fund, and, or sorry, our Economic Development Reserve Fund. And so it's, it's $50,000 towards improvements in our own building that we leased to the museum. And so it's our responsibility to step up and be a part of this investment. And in fact, school groups will benefit from this, and it will be able to enhance their existing curriculum in, in helping kids to learn and become more familiar with, with making things. And it's, it's going to be an exciting opportunity for, for kids from around the region to participate in.
Counsel, thank you, Counselor Marsh. Counselor Iannidis?
Yeah, most of my comments were made. Mr. Mayor?
Okay. There being no others, I'll just make mine very briefly. I will be supporting item number four. As I said at committee, I think there's two things that are important to remember here. Number one, the museum is probably the third most significant thing that brings people into, into the downtown. The first two being the, the center in the square and, and all of our festivals, if you, if you combine them. I mean, they had over 100,000 visitors last year, and I think anything that continues to see that grow only adds to the viability of, of that facility, as well as the kind of environment we're trying to create on behalf of all ratepayers from, from throughout the community. Second, and I think more importantly, we know that significant challenges exist to get young people engaged in activities associated around STEM. And the kind of maker space that's being contemplated is getting young people involved at a young age, so that hopefully they will consider pursuing careers in, in areas such as science, mathematics, technology, and so on, and engineering. And so I think it is an important investment. It augments, in fact, what our, our schools and system and others are able to do in the community, and will help it grow. And that's something that, that, that needs to happen going forward. So I will be supporting it. It's been asked that we deal with number four separately, and that a recorded vote be called, so I'll deal with that item first. I can ask people to vote, please. All those in favor? All those opposed? That is carried. On the balance of the report, Counselor Galloway-Seelock?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we can defer the number two until next Monday, because we are going to have the broader noise exemption discussion, and there's going to be, I believe, delegations present from our agenda setting. So I would like to, just especially because of the Sunday going so late, I think there's going to be some discussion around that on Monday, so I would like to defer that one until Monday.
Okay, I'll deal with that items separately. Is there a second or for the deferral? Counselor Davy? So until next Monday, any questions? All those in favor of the deferral? All those opposed? That's carried. The balance of the report. All those in favor? Opposed? That too is carried. We've dealt with planning and strategic initiatives. We'll now move on to new business. And Counselor Yonetski, if I can ask you to take the chair for that first one, because as the agenda notes, I'll be seconding this motion, so. Nine A. Sorry, unfinished business, okay? Counselor Fernandez?
Yeah, I just wanted to let the council know the status presently of the OMB summit. I had brought a motion forward back a month and a bit ago. We had our final steering committee just before the actual summit. We have 33% of municipalities represented at this time, and we're getting close to our, our total headcount. I'd like to strongly encourage any members of council that have not registered for the May 14 summit. We have a really great slate of presenters and panel speakers, and I know that our staff have that additional information. We have 80 municipalities represented, and so we're, we're doing really well, and we've really reached quite a number of municipalities across southwestern Ontario. So I just wanted to bring an update to council about that.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's helpful, and it's also my understanding, and we can, at the time, in the future, when we deal with this issue, it's my understanding that the AMO committee that's made up of, or through Marco, I believe, that Chair Seeling is on, they have actually commissioned some work with respect to OMB review as well, from an AMO perspective. And that will be shared with municipalities once it's done, but my understanding is they're looking at best practices in other jurisdictions and so on, and that will be shared with councils. I believe AMO has commissioned a consulting firm to work with them on that. Counselor Fernandez?
Yeah, just to add to that, Mayor Vervanevic, we will have AMO, a representative from AMO there, possibly a representative from the Minister's Municipal Housing Affairs representative there, as well as a previous AMO president will be sitting on the panel. So we're, we are definitely working together with the Association of Municipalities across Ontario, and I think that it's very important work that we're all doing together.
Absolutely. No, very much agreed. So, Counselor Yonetski, you want to turn on your mic? Um, sure, you can come here, and I can go over there. We'll just have to move around if we do a recorded, a recorded vote later on.
Under new business, we have a notice of motion for the municipal elections reform brought forward by Counselor Davy, and I'll move it forward to Counselor Davy for comments or for introduction. Have I got it? Whoops, hang on.
Thank you. I'll just start by reading the motion. I'll try and read it quickly. Whereas one of the fundamental principles in a democratic society is that everyone should possess an equal voice and ability to influence the decisions of elected officials. And whereas this principle would be reinforced through the enactment of progressive electoral reforms aimed at leveling the playing field for all members of the citizenry. And whereas the Ontario Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing recently announced their intention to potentially allow municipalities to ban corporate and union donations to municipal election campaigns. And whereas such amendments to the Municipal Elections Act would ensure that only individual residents of the province of Ontario would be empowered to financially contribute to the campaigns of those persons seeking to hold elected office at the local level. Therefore, be it resolved that the provincial government be encouraged to approve the proposed changes to the MEA to enable all municipalities to ban corporate and union donations. Be it further resolved that, subject to being afforded the opportunity through the enactment of proposed amendments to the MEA, staff be directed to bring forward the necessary bylaw to ban corporate and union donations to municipal election campaigns in the city of Kitchener. Be it finally resolved that the copy of this motion be circulated to Premier Kathleen Wynn, Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing Ted McMecon, and the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, and local members of provincial parliament, and local area municipalities. I think the motion is fairly self-explanatory. I don't need to speak at length about it. I would say that of the measures brought forward, this particular one is not only an accountable and transparent measure, but one that's simple enough in concept that I don't think we need any critical staff analysis. I think it's pretty self-explanatory. My belief is that only individual citizens should be able to contribute to political campaigns. Special interest groups, unions, and corporations are not citizens, nor can they vote, so I think it only follows that only, that they should not be able to contribute as well. So I would ask that, I would ask that my fellow members of council please support this motion.
And do we have a second? Okay, second by Mayor Vervanevic. Counselor Etherington?
Some questions, Mr. Chair. Questions to Counselor Davy or to the clerk? Probably Counselor Davy. How do you define the word corporate in your motion? What does it mean?
Oops, sorry. I think rather than going into details or definitions of that, I think it's probably easier to think of the motion as banning anyone other than individuals from being able to contribute, if that helps.
Okay. And when we talk about banning corporate donations, are we just talking corporations? Or will this include donations from Kitchener developers or landowners who help finance the election campaigns of some members of this council?
Absolutely not. So developers would count as corporations, it would only be individuals. Now, having said that, individuals that happen to work for a developer, for example, would still be able to contribute, but the corporation would not.
That's what I was going to ask. Will this type of legislation, if it passes, prevent these developers or landowners making donations to councillors, either directly or through relatives or employees?
This motion would not, nor do I think there's any practical way to be able to, to implement that process, because it is any citizen's free right to, I think, to, to invest in a campaign. I wish there was a method of doing that, but that's beyond the scope of this motion.
So what would change as a result of this motion?
In the very least, it would make it more difficult for corporations or union groups or any special interests to double up on the donations that are made. They would have to at least be personal donations as opposed to corporations without anyone behind them. There has to be an actual name on the papers that we can see.
Okay. And a couple more questions to the mayor or to Counselor Davy. How would any person conduct a merit campaign, looking at roughly a cost of 80,000 plus, without the benefit of these type of donations?
I'm not, I don't plan to run for mayor, so I'm not, but my response would be that it really would be a level playing field, so everyone would be starting with the same rules. So everyone would, no one would be allowed to have that extra dollar, so yes, maybe less money will be spent on, on campaigns going forward, but I would also argue that's good for democracy, because that would lower the cost of entry to municipal campaign.
Right. And one last question. Have we, before this evening, made an effort to invite potential corporate donors and unions, or the Labor Council, to appear before the council and express their views before we vote on it?
No, we have not, and I would be actually rather opposed to that, because that's exactly the point of this motion.
Okay. Those are my questions, Mr. Chair. I will have some comments and a request that we defer this for two weeks, so that we can invite those people to the council chamber.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Etherington. I'll consider your deferral here after we have further comments. Counselor Gazola?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. I was surprised to see this here. Nothing wrong with it, but I'm just curious as to what has given rise to this motion. Are you aware of, of problems with the system that's in place now, as it might affect the city of Kitchener? I guess as to Counselor Davy, or to Mayor Vervanevic, or whoever's, whoever's bringing the motion forward.
Again? I'm not, oh, thank you. Thank you for the question, yes. No, I'm not aware of any problems with any members of council at, at the moment, but like my, I would say, like my conference motion in the past, I'm a fan of trying to solve some of these problems before they happen.
Got to log in. Yeah, just maybe further to respond to that. I think what's given rise to it, Counselor Gazola, is that the province has come forward with, with changes, proposed changes to the Municipal Election Act. This is one of them, and there's several other changes that they have proposed. We received an email, I think, from staff on Thursday or Friday with respect to a series of things that they're looking at. It gets into things like proportional balloting and some of those other issues, and, and will be, as staff indicated, dealing with those in the coming, in the coming months in the lead up to 2018.
Yeah, has the province talked about this? I noticed we did get a report. Did they talk specifically about this corporate? Well, I, I quite favor something like this. I'm just curious if you have given thought to going the whole distance and not have, not allow any donations to candidates? And I know the first thing you'll say was that can't work, but if there was a system whereby anyone that wanted to donate to keep our political system going, they donate it into a public pot that is then allocated to all people who are running for office. And that way, you get totally out of this area that I think you're, you're sort of leaning towards. Has any thought been given to something like that? That's thinking outside the box.
Thanks, councillor Gazola. Yes, I know there's been some, some discussion about that, but all I can say is that's not part of the province's direction at this time. I personally would be open to that sort of discussion, but I think that would be a level over and above what we're looking at today.
Why don't you take up, take up the flag and carry it even a step further?
Well, we're starting with this, I think, because we deal with this today.
All right, I'll have a, I'll have a comment too when it comes around.
Councillor Gallois-Celac.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask around businesses, and if this affects businesses at all, because our businesses also pay taxes, and how do they get to have their say when it's time for an election, and who they want to represent them from a business perspective, and the taxes that they pay and are held accountable for?
Sir, that's a question of myself?
Or whoever.
Yeah, and I would argue that behind every business are people, and whoever the proprietor of the business is, is still welcome to make a contribution to the candidate if they so choose, and I think that that's the equal way to do it, as opposed to that same person being able to donate twice to an individual candidate.
Okay. Thank you.
Is nobody else who wishes to ask any questions? I have a motion here then before me by councillor Etherington to... I'm sorry? Oh, now she's logged in, okay. Councillor Fernandez.
Yes, thanks. I think this is a really good step in the right direction, but I think councillor Etherington did touch on a concern that I have, and that would be, and I recognize it would be very difficult to monitor this, but whether a business developer, a union would say to their membership, "You guys all need to contribute, and we'll give it back to you one way or another", I mean, that could very well happen. Do you, are you recognizing that factor as well?
That could very well happen. As I mentioned before, I don't think there's a practical way to eliminate that, but we can make it harder.
Okay. This applies to associations as well, so if firefighter association, police association, this applies to that as well?
It does, yeah. Anyone that isn't an individual.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Gazola.
I was going to make a comment. Is it time for comments? Are there any comments?
Any, any want to speak up?
Comments.
Well, in a second. I have councillor Ayenitis here. Is this questions or comments? Okay, councillor Ayenitis.
This doesn't exclude businesses that aren't corporations. It does, I'm trying to see where that is.
Anything more?
Can you give me a better understand rationale as to why a business that's not a corporation can't have a say?
What's that? Yeah, they can't? I think I've answered that question, but I, again, I go back to the point that behind businesses are proprietors who can vote and make, and make a contribution, and I don't think they need to be able to do it twice.
Comments, councillor Gazola.
Yeah, just a very quick comment. I will, I will support this. I think it's, it goes in the right direction. I've always been concerned how corporations do provide substantial funding for candidates, and then how, how candidates, when we get to this position, can have a open mind going down the road, after having received some large donations. It's, it's a pretty hard thing for a human being to deal with, so this would somewhat help to relieve that. I can still see that, I have found over the years, that when it comes to rules and regulations around the local municipal elections, there don't seem to be, a lot of rules often get broken, and there are often, people get away with breaking the rules, there's not much that happens. So, I don't have a great deal of faith in this, but I can support it, because it is moving in the right direction, and who knows, maybe we'll even get our provincial party to stop doing some of the ways they're raising monies. So, I will support this at this stage of the game. Thank you.
Councillor Ayenitis.
Yeah, I will support the recommendation. I think it's, it's an important step forward into having more of an even playing field and being more transparent when it comes to our municipal elections, and even other elections from other levels of government, so I think it makes sense.
Thank you. Councillor Etherington.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. As I said, I want to see it deferred, but I did have a general comment on this. I want to see some real change. I'm not interested in spoken mirrors and creating some type of fuzzy illusion among voters, that this type of motion will either level their ability to influence decisions of elected officials, or influence the equality of municipal elections. I don't believe that. I support the intent, but I would like to give the people affected a chance to comment on it. So, that's why I'm asking that it be deferred until May 16th, so we have the time for those people to comment.
That's three weeks from now, as opposed to two weeks, as you said initially. Yeah. Okay. Mayor Verbanovic.
Thank you. So, I'll just, a secondary, I'll speak to the motion. I will be supporting the motion that's before us. This is going a direction where the federal government went some time ago, back in around 2002, if I remember. Their initial step to it was that they actually replaced corporate donations with allowing, or giving parties a per vote, or people who got elected, and then those parties, a certain number of dollars per vote, and then that eventually phased out and moved away from that, I think it was two or three years ago. And so federally, the only people that can actually make donations now are individuals. And I think their limit there is around $1,400. Provincially, we know that corporations and associations and so on still can make donations, and there's talk of removing that, and that talk started a couple of weeks after the province introduced this, which is something that municipalities have been asking for. And so, the motion that, that's before us, that councillor Davie has drafted, really moves to the scenario that has been in place, which, which is leaving it at a maximum donation as has been in existence for 20 years, which is, or more, longer than that, which is a maximum donation of $750, but limiting it only to individuals and not corporations or associations or unions. And a last for a recorded vote.
Okay, I have a motion by councillor Etherington. I need a secondary. Okay, seconded by councillor Gallois-Celac. Everybody's had their comments. I will provide my comments here. I reviewed this, and I had my concerns in regard to the issue of the corporate and its definition that was discussed here this evening, and I still feel uncomfortable about it, but I do like councillor Etherington's motion to have this deferred, to get further input from the, from the public and the industry on this particular issue. So, that goes basically on my comments. And with a recorded vote, we will be voting on a deferral first to May 16th, which is roughly three weeks from today. You did. Okay, I assume councillor, the mayor's comment on a recorded vote was for everything. Okay, so you're coming here to do that, and I go over there?
Yeah. There's more to share, maybe you can just finish it from there then. Those opposed to this throw? This throw has been carried, so now it's on the main motion, a recorded vote. Sorry, one minute, councillor, you can ask the individual chair.
Yes. Not as you had more to say, okay, there's a recorded vote. Okay, all those in favor? And all those opposed? Okay, motions carried to the, motion by councillor Davie.
Sorry, we'll move on to 9B. Councillor Schneider.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. I'll read the motion. It's in regards to our home office and technology expense reports. The motion reads, whereas one of the city's five strategic priorities is open government, where we will be transparent and accountable to citizens, providing easy access to information; and whereas the city's vision for open government reads, to provide a city government that is transparent and accountable to its citizens, with opportunities for meaningful, accessible public participation made possible through innovation, technology, and collaboration; and whereas one of the components of the corporate accountability and transparency policy states, information deemed to be in the public interest is to be updated regularly, consistently, and as much as possible proactively; and whereas council is responsible for holding staff to the highest levels of accountability in all financial and decision-making matters; and whereas members of council should endeavor to be leaders in terms of transparency; therefore, be it resolved that for all future home office and technology expense reports, staff be directed to itemize both the capital and operating expenditures, to show how each member of council's budget allocation was utilized; be it further resolved that for ease of access, the annual itemized spending reports shall be posted under the city council section of the city of Kitchener website; and be it finally resolved that members of council be afforded the opportunity when submitting an expense, to provide a notation for inclusion as part of the annual report to give context to a particular expenditure. This motion is meant to increase our transparency and accountability. There's an old saying that goes, "Never ask for anything that you're not prepared to give yourself." As council, we hold staff up to financial scrutiny on behalf of the citizens who elected us. Those same citizens should have easy access to detailed information on how we spend the tax dollars allotted to us and our home office and tech budgets. And by itemizing our expenditures, our citizens can see how we use their tax dollars, and for clarity, councillors will be able to include information that provides context to our expenditures. By placing this information on the council section of the website, we make it easy for citizens to find it in a place that makes sense. And while it's not part of the motion, I've observed that the internal guidelines for our tech and home office purchases still allow for the purchase of redundant and outdated technologies like fax machines and cameras, so I trust staff will be addressing these issues when the guidelines are reviewed prior to the next term of council, to eliminate items which are no longer relevant. So, I now move this motion, seconded by councillor Frank Etherington.
Okay, councillor Gallois-Celac.
No, I was just going to second the motion. I don't have any questions, just a quick comment that I think this is a great proposal that I think just holds us to a different level and standard, and I think it's good to be accountable and transparent to the community in all the dealings that we have, and so I think this is an important motion to move forward.
Okay, thank you, councillor Marsh.
I also was going to second the motion, and I don't have any questions at this time. I think it's a great motion.
So, it's been third and fourth? Councillor Fernandez.
I do have a question. I just want to point a clarification, councillor Schneider. When you're talking about afford the opportunity when submitting an expense to provide a notation for inclusion, what, can you give us an example of what you mean by that?
Okay, if you purchased a laptop computer, you could mention that, you know, you purchased a laptop computer, and the reasons you deem it necessary to perform your duties as councillor.
Okay. And are you talking also about purchasing tickets for golfing, or swim passes, or events? When we go to particular events, we may bring our spouse. Are you talking about those expenses as well, or not?
No, this is strictly our, our home office and tech budget.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
Councillor Etherington.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Speaking as someone who, with slight success, has repeatedly tried to reduce these expenses during the past six years, I completely support this and commend councillor Schneider. I also support any, any attempt to have councillors exercise discipline when claiming these expenses. I hope that by making this policy a little more transparent for residents, it will make councillors more cautious about spending an estimated amount that can easily approach a total, this is a rough figure, $100,000 in a four-year term for capital and operating costs, partly because we have well-equipped offices at City Hall. I believe this type of spending for items, including office furniture and some of the things councillor Schneider mentioned, in my opinion, that is excessive, and by making it known how the money is used, it will become more transparent and obvious to both the media and to taxpayers who foot the bills for such spending. Thank you.
Councillor Davie.
Thank you. Just one quick question, like on the detail part, so, just so I can understand it. So, the intent would be that on the website, the public could go to our specific webpage, and it would list, like, say, computer, and then the cost beside that, then for each item all the way down?
Yeah, the items would all be itemized, but you would also have the ability to make a notation, as for the reason for the purchase.
Great, yeah, I'll just comment briefly, Mr. Mayor. I will support this. I think it's a level of transparency that we should be held to, and I'm happy to support it.
Thank you, councillor Gazola.
Yeah, I just a question. This information is reported annually, and I report that, I'm not sure the city treasurer puts out, this is over and above that information?
It's simply itemizing the purchases that add up.
So, it has every, every individual purchase?
It would, yeah.
Yeah, including monthly telephone bills and monthly internet charges?
Yes.
That would, and that would be posted individually every month?
No, the annual reports. So, our, our annual reports, that, the one that just came out, it would, it would come out and, and be posted on the council section of the city website.
Is that not broken down now in the report?
It's, it's not itemized, no, it's just one figure.
Okay, thank you.
I have a comment.
Okay, councillor Yanetski.
Are we in comments right now?
Sure.
Okay. I have no-
Okay. I have no concern with regard to this motion. However, I just wonder if it's overkill or not, because when you look at a computer technology, features that you buy, I mean, you may have a laptop, you may have a tablet or a computer, and once you buy it, that's it. You know, you've got it for years. I mean, I bought mine like five years ago in my first term, and really don't need another computer. Once you have it, it lasts, and it continues on. I did buy a laptop, because I tried to do without it, and then it gets to a point where you can't survive. And you gotta buy some of this technology that we're offered to by the city, so you can function. So you only got maybe three or four items that basically will be addressed, and it's fairly straightforward. You know, lump sum at the end is, you know, gives you the factor, and you've got a limit of $1,250 a year on this. And not $100,000, that's councillor Etherington is using a lump sum for all the councillors here. So once you have it, it lasts for a long time. So in principle, I'll still support it, but I think it's a rather redundant process we're going through.
Councillor Ionitis.
Yes, through you Mayor Vervanevic. I had one little concern, which was the posting on... I thought it was gonna be monthly, but since it's gonna be annually, I don't have an issue with this, and I can support this.
Thank you councillor Gazola.
I just wanna make a comment. I will support it. I suppose any living individual around this horseshoe will support it. I don't see that it does a great deal. It's not a bad thing. Transparency is a wonderful thing. I can only say that I wish councillors Schneider and Etherington's really concern for transparency would have been more supportive to me, and for a number of weeks and months, I've been trying to question items that are being discussed in camera. Now, there's where you get into some real transparency issues, and to me, of much greater importance than this. But having said that, I will support this, and I trust your asking for a recorded vote. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? If not, I too will be supportive of this. I want to thank councillor Schneider for bringing this forward. I think it's great when we can have this information available on our website, and make it available to the community as part of our ongoing transparency as elected officials. So a recorded vote has been called. I'll ask the clerk to turn it on. All those in favor? Actually, you don't have to get up. It's carried unanimously. Apologies. Okay, we'll move on to the regional report, and I'll ask people to turn to page 9C-1. There's four committees that we need to get local councillors for. Usually, the practice has been to put the local councillor onto... the local ward councillor onto the individual project. As... and people can correct me if I'm wrong, in the case of number 51, I believe that that is councillors Galloway-Seelock and Singh. Number 52 is councillor Davy. Number 53 would be councillor Marsh, and number 54 would be councillor Etherington. I do note a correction as well on 9C-3. Number 5, the airport master plan. There already is appointed by regional councillor, by regional council, a member of the airport master plan, and that's councillor Dave Schneider on that one, on that committee. So I will... I see a number of people have keyed in. Councillor Gazola.
No, I'm not keyed in for this. I have another new business issue.
Oh, okay.
I will get out and come back.
No, sorry, I should have dealt with that and asked for that. I apologize. Okay, I'll keep going on this then. Councillor Galloway-Seelock.
Yeah, I was just noting on number 51, I'd be more than happy to sit on that, and it divides with councillors Singh in my ward. I think it's just having the background with sitting on the Fisher-Holman EAs for both Bloem's and from Bloem's to Ottawa, and from Bloem's to Plains. I think it's a good fit to keep going with how those will cross-intercept with each other.
Okay. Councillor Davy, are you interested in being on number 52? Yes. Councillor Marsh, are you interested in being on number 53? Yes. And councillor Etherington, are you interested in being on number 54? Yes. Are there any other folks interested? There was. We require a vote. But if there's not, I'll take a motion to move those four people. Moved by councillor Ionitis, seconded by councillor Davy. Oh, councillor Gazola... oh, that's for the next item, okay. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. You were quick to the draw. Councillor Gazola, go ahead.
Yeah, I just... I want to bring a request to council. Last month, at our heritage committee meeting, we were fortunate to have Mr. Rick Holdenby address the committee, dealing with... really dealing with architecture in our community, and all the things that have been saved for heritage in our community over the past. He covered a long term of the city's history. And at that, it was a very interesting and informative, very informative presentation. And I had asked Mr. Holdenby if he would be prepared to come and present a similar type report to all members of council. It was something that I felt that all members of council would enjoy and could learn a great deal about the city's architecture and how it ties in with our heritage. And what I had in mind was that we have strategy sessions slash educational sessions from time to time, where individuals like that can come in and speak for an hour or so to present additional information to council. And it was sort of left that Mr. Holdenby would have to come as a delegate, and would have five minutes to speak to council. That wasn't the idea. The idea was that he would come to one of our strategy educational sessions and make a presentation to us. There's no time, there's no rush, there's just something that can be done at any time. And I would like to ask if council would go along with extending that invitation to Mr. Holdenby. If not, that's fine, but I would like to hear from all of councils.
Okay, now, I do know it was on... it was slated to come on to the either committee or council agenda next cycle. I know that the practice, and I'll look to Mr. Wilmer here, the practice on strategy sessions, for the most part that I can recall, has been internal. We generally haven't had external people that I can recall. Is this something that management would want to talk about first, or... Mr. Wilmer?
Through the mayor, I think that we have brought in external people when it falls into the category of orientation, where their expertise is something that we don't have on staff. So I think the issue here is that for strategy sessions, we're trying to keep them to two items per session, because they usually had... they require quite a bit of council's time and attention. And I think that the sessions we have scheduled for this year are already fully booked. But if council's interested in having an additional one, we may have to find another date for that, or to add a date for an additional strategy session.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Ionitis?
Yeah, I have a question to staff, too. With regards to our strategy sessions, aren't they primarily priority items that council has deemed as important?
Mr. Wilmer, if you can key in again?
I think they're a combination of matters. Certainly, they're emerging issues that either council has deemed as important, or staff are recommending as important. But I think the motion that's before you now is your opportunity to decide whether you see this as important.
Okay. Councillor Schneider, I'll come back to you in a second. Councillor Gazola?
This is something that I would be interested in. And I don't know if we could do that. Like, there's times when we get an invite for a tour of a facility, if it's something that could be maybe more loosely based. I'd be interested in that.
Well, I think the challenge there is if we're going to involve more than five members of council, we would... it needs to be a formal meeting of council, and hence it would need to be a strategy session.
Okay.
Councillor Gazola, can you just maybe clarify, before we go much further, what the topic of the presentation would be, just so people are aware?
Well, it's to deal with... it was where he covered the architecture in our community, and what has been done, how important it is, how it all fits together, and what has been done over the years to save that as part of our heritage.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to just make a motion that within the next two years, we find an hour to listen to a presentation by a person that's extremely knowledgeable in this area, and that's it.
Okay.
We... I believe there's a lot for us all to learn, and it's an area that we do spend a lot of time discussing. It's an opportunity for us to learn. Perhaps we don't have anything to learn, and you can defeat the motion, so.
Okay. So is there a second or further motion? Okay, councillor Marsh, thank you. Councillor Janetski.
Yes, I was at that heritage meeting back last month, when Mr. Holdenby made a presentation to the committee on the architecture of significant buildings in Kitchener, in both industrial and institutional, et cetera. And I also was at one of his other presentations back about a year ago, who did a similar thing, but on a slightly different topic in terms of historical and heritage and architectural significant buildings in Kitchener as well, to another group. And through our discussions, I had had some discussions with the city clerk's department about bringing this forward, but knowing the time constraints to make a presentation of 10 minutes or five minutes made it rather impossible to have him come forward and make a presentation. I mean, you just have an introduction and go into conclusions, and that would basically be it. I'm pleased that councillor Gazola has brought it forward to have it as an educational process, where his presentation, which is from a professor's type of perspective, and a historical perspective, would be doing justice for our council. I was quite impressed with his presentation earlier this month, and thought that it would be a great benefit to council to see what significance we have here. So I think this is something that we should move forward on. There's no rush for him to do it. He was in communication with us, but sometime in the immediate near future would be appropriate at a strategy session that's been brought up.
Okay, thank you councillor Fernandez.
Yeah, I think that... what a great opportunity for education for council, and I would prefer to have it done within the next year. I mean, otherwise, we're approaching the next election, and who knows what the makeup of council will be. We often have strat sessions that are educational, have an educational component to it. And I was certainly enthusiastic to hear that a professor of Mr. Holdenby's standard is willing to spend time with us and staff, who may not be aware of the wins and the losses, and the standards and the practices around this community, and maybe at large. So I certainly hope that we see it fit to support this recommendation, and that we can fit it in, either a strat session in the coming months, or certainly in the next year.
Councillor Ionitis?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. My question is regarding procedure. Usually, when there's new business, shouldn't there be... it be written forward, or at least give some time? Like, a week's time, or two weeks' time?
This is really direction to staff, and we typically don't...
Well, no, it's actually a motion being put forward, like...
It is councillor, but we often deal with these kinds of things, in terms of a reasonable request, and I consider this a reasonable request.
Okay. Well, I'll remember that the next time when I bring forward something, and then you request it. But anyways, I'd be happy to actually sit down and listen to Mr. Holdenby, because I think he would be very informative, and I think he would actually, you know, dispel the myth that we keep hearing, that we don't preserve our buildings here in our community.
Councillor Etherington.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Actually, to comment on the comment that was just made, I've heard Mr. Holdenby speak, I think, twice, maybe three times. And I would point out that those talks are, I believe they're published, and they take place at the Victoria Park Pavilion. Mr. Holdenby lives nearby. They're fascinating talks. And I would love to see him give them here at the city. But I would also point out that he not only documents some of the wonderful buildings we still have, but he very much identifies some of the buildings we've destroyed, that we've demolished. So we'll see both sides of that picture. And I would certainly welcome him coming, but I would hate to see him limited to five minutes.
I think if we're talking about a strat session, he won't be limited to five minutes. Councillor Davy?
Thank you. I will support this. I just wanted to comment, though, again, around the, I guess I want to say, perhaps precedent of this sort of approach. I'm happy, I understand that councillor Gazola is very, very interested and defends heritage, and I respect that, and he wants to help educate council, and I respect that. All I would say is that, on a go-forward basis, that I hope everyone would afford the rest of council the same opportunity, if they wish to bring forward something, like, and myself, on the... I can see myself, if this is a new route that we're going, you know, a strategy session on the benefits of Wi-Fi and broadband, even municipal broadband in a community. So if this is the route that council's content with, I'm happy to go along that road. I just want to make sure that it's an opportunity that's afforded to all of council.
May I say a word?
Yeah, councillor Gazola, and then I have a question.
I'm not asking for big favors and big changes in process. This is something we do all the time. As an example, a year or so ago, we had someone from the Ministry of the Environment come and give us a two-hour session on the principles behind environmental assessments that we get involved with, and what... it was a very similar type of situation. So if it will satisfy council, there's all the councils, that I come back and bring forward notice of motion, and all of these things.
I've already accepted your motion councillor Gazola. So, but my only question to you, councillor Gazola, and I think this is, you know, more than happy to have a presentation from Mr. Holdenby. I presume, you know, as would be normal with a strat session, you're okay with staff coordinating with him? And in fact, it might be a dual presentation that involves our capable heritage staff as well as Mr. Holdenby.
By all means, I would prefer that they do all of this, and not have me fiddling around with it.
Okay, thank you. So there is a motion, it has been seconded. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried unanimously. Okay, we will now move on to questions and answers. We'll then move on to number 11, the bylaws first reading. It's been moved by councillor Gazola, seconded by councillor Marsh, that lead be given to the mover, and seconded to introduce the bylaws listed on the agenda, and that the same be taken as read a first time and stand referred to committee of the whole. And before we do that, there is one late starter, madam clerk.
Yes, there's one late starter concerning PSEC report number one, concerning...
The geese property?
That's correct, thank you.
Okay. So it has been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. It's been moved by councillor Ionitis, that council resolve itself into committee of the whole. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Councillor Ionitis, if you can turn your mic on. Thank you. Over to you.
Yeah, it's been moved by myself that we have a second reading of the bylaws.
No, no, you need someone else to move that.
Okay, moved by councillor Davy. Any questions? All those in favor? That's carried. It's... do we have a mover for items? What part? Item number two?
Councillor Gazola, you have three people that have keyed in. Councillors Gazola, Fernandez, and Davy.
Those are questions?
Yeah, I just want to ask, we're going to have... we're gonna get $250,000 from the province, or federal government. from the province or federal government, and we're also putting in $250,000, which is a half a million dollars. I'm just curious, and I asked today, as to what, what still isn't covered with wifi in our city, like all our community centers are. I'm just curious as to where we're going to spend that half a million dollars. I read the report, thank you, Counselor Marsh, and it said Victoria Park, McLennan Park-
Mr. Chapman, can you address the question, even though it's in the report?
Through you, Mr. Chair. The three priority locations are the odd, McLennan Park and Victoria Park. And if funds remain, there is still a list of other priority B sites that we would move into once those three are complete.
I just, what I'm curious is that a half a million dollars to put those three sites on wifi seems like a tremendous amount of money. I'm trying to understand what, you know, what's involved. It's a lot of money.
Yeah, through the chair.
To me.
Up until this point, the implementation has been very cost-effective because we've leveraged all of our existing network infrastructure to deploy wifi. So as we upgraded our voice-over IP system for telephones, we simply added wifi access to that. In this case, the basic infrastructure does not exist in the odd or in the two parks, and that's why the cost is so substantially higher to put in the network and then to deploy wifi on that network.
Okay, the other question I have in line with this, that very shortly we're going to get involved with our LED, our new LED system, and our, which is also going to be accompanied by this smart system. How will that, is this, does this interfere with that? Or is it, is it something that should be tied into that, into that program?
Not at present. For now, the LED streetlight implementation is focused on a narrowband infrastructure. And so while there may be opportunity in time to expand that infrastructure, at this point in time, there is no conflict between this project and the LED project.
But we are looking, I thought, from when we discussed that we're going into the wideband area, and I'm just wondering if the two, of these two things can piggyback.
I believe Mr. Murray is satisfied that while they're complementary, they are separate at this point.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions? Counselor Fernandez?
Would you be able to identify some of the other locations as you mentioned as the budget allows?
Through the chair, I don't have that list at my fingertips. I believe it was provided previously, so I can circulate that to council after the meeting.
Okay. If a particular councilor did not support the previous recommendation, because really we listed citywide park improvements, specifically Huron Natural Area, McLennan Park, and the Quanis Park Pool, wouldn't be expected to support this at this time, right? If it wasn't supported in the initial report, right, we originally had listed four other or three other options for this money. So now that it's only been earmarked for the wifi, there would be no expectation to support the wifi if you supported citywide park improvements, first of all.
Just for a question to our clerks?
No, I don't, I think I can answer it. So I understand what you're saying is that this was a lower priority for you, you did not support it initially. The only question before council right now is whether or not we enter into an agreement to access the federal funding. Council's already approved the budget for our share, and so even if you didn't support it initially, I think you would agree it's a good thing for us to access 50 cent dollars to fund the project. And so I don't see any reason why you couldn't support the agreement at this point, even if you didn't support the priority initially.
The money is, has already been budgeted?
Our share has been budgeted. This simply would provide access to the federal share.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Davy, yeah, Counselor Davy, sorry.
Sir, I just want to take the opportunity, I'm a big supporter of these things, and I actually do have one quick question. So it does say in the report that approximately five city locations and only four are listed. So my, I'm assuming that staff's being conservative and there will be a fifth. They just don't want to name it until they know they have the budget for it. Is that a safe assumption?
Mr. Chapman?
Through the chair, I'll go back and clarify that, whether it's an error and there are four or if there are five, which the fifth one is, and also Counselor Fernandez's question around the priority B sites that we would move into separately.
Okay, and I'll just comment briefly. Again, happy to see this before us. In addition to the 13 locations we already have, our wifi network is expanding. I'm a huge proponent of municipal broadband and wifi, and I realize that I'm much more ambitious than perhaps some members of council, but I'm really content to see the speed at which we're moving.
Okay, we have no further questions. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Item number three, do we have a mover? Counselor Marsh? Do we have any questions on item number three? I see no questions. All, oh, question. Counselor Fernandez?
Yeah, I think it's wonderful that we have people who are so committed to being part of our nominating committee. But one of the things that I am a little bit concerned about, and so I'd like to just ask if it's possible, if our nominating committee can sit in on the advisory committees at some point in time just to have a better understanding of, A, the makeup of the advisory committees, maybe some, what's happening with regards to the ebb and flow of membership. I think it just may give them a more fulsome understanding when they look at all these applications. I realize we're asking a lot of these people. They're already very, very busy. But I just thought that this might be something that might be an opportunity for them to have a better understanding of what each advisory committee is, consists of. And I'm also, I'm not really sure that I support the idea of the one clause two, that we are going to remove, we're going, yeah, are we removing it? Is that, that they don't have to reside or own property in the city of Kitchener?
No, they're, it's a requirement that they reside or-
It is a requirement, that, yeah, for some reason I thought that that was not going to be a requirement, that we were going to remove that, and I don't want to see that removed.
I'm reading it here on the blue, sorry. Madam Clerk?
So with respect to having the nominating committee members attend advisory committees, they do look at the terms of reference, but I can certainly put it to them, through you, Mr. Chair. And as you've pointed out, Counselor Fernandez, they are very busy people, but I will put it to them and see if they are able to. With respect to clause two, we're just looking for suspension for the nominating committee only, simply because, as I pointed out in my report, two of the particular organizations do not have offices in Kitchener, and depending on the employee who's pointed, or who, the employee who's coming to the committee, they may or may not reside in Kitchener as well. So we're just temporarily suspending it simply for this particular committee.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification, Ms. Tarling. I just think that for some committees, like the downtown advisory committee or EDAC, they really need to have an understanding of what's happening in our community. And if they don't live here, if, for example, they live in Guelph, or they, you know, they're, they're not in sync with what's happening in our community. So I would have a little bit of concern about that.
Well, I think that's why we have the advisory committees who are sitting on those boards. This is more primarily for a third party, so that they don't take any, this is, they can take away part of the politics and everything else that's associated with these appointments. But Mayor Verbanovic, you wanted to comment?
Yes, thank you, if I could, and I appreciate what Counselor Fernandez is saying. I think we recall why we went in this direction. It was, as you indicate, to remove some of the politics of it, but to use people who are actually well-regarded in the community, are highly involved in organizations that are, that operate in our community and operate with organizations in our community. So the United Way, the Community Foundation, the Multicultural Center, the Capacity Water Region, and the Chamber of Commerce. And these people do have a broad knowledge of a broad sector of the community, from business to social. And we're able to, as the report indicated, provide good service to us in that regard and bring the knowledge and expertise that Counselor Fernandez is talking about.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification, and, you know, as I read in the report, the staff is going to come back and report to council on how that advances forward. But my other suggestion does stand. I think it is important for them to have a little, if they, you know, divide and conquer, they each get a chance to go to the city and at least one advisory committee that might help them. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Marsh?
Yeah, just to add to that, I think it is, you know, those are public meetings that anybody can attend. They're publicly announced. And my understanding of the nominating committee's role is that they would take the terms of reference for each committee and use that to assess the applications. And so I, you know, regardless of what happens in the meetings in practice, I think that if we start with the terms of reference, that that is also a strong grounding. So, you know, as much as we can invite them to take the opportunity to, to take advantage of the fact that it's a public meeting, I do not think that we need to obligate these very involved and busy people to, as a requirement, to come to meetings. Just my two cents.
Okay, we have no further questions. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Do we, Counselor Gazola moves item number four? Item number four, you mean, move, okay.
Okay. My question is, as with all projects from the federal and provincial governments, when we get a grant, we have to match it. Have we, do we have this additional $325,000? Was it planned for or? Do we have the funding already somewhere?
Through the chair, the $325,000 is budgeted in our trails' general provision account.
Okay, I understood it was in 2017.
Through the chair, the design will happen this year, and the actual construction will happen in 2017.
Okay, so you do have the additional $300,000. Yeah, the other point, in reading this, I was pleased to see that we can use that monies to build new or improve existing ones. So I want to ask a question. This primarily is in the ward that I represent. Can we move this around to a part of the ward that needs repair? I'm relating to the area in Deer Ridge where the trail keeps washing out, and we can't seem to fix it, and we're, we spend half of our year or more without a trail there. Can we not, can we not fix what we've got before we do additional work? It's a nasty question, but-
It's not a nasty question. Through the chair, this is an existing portion of our trail network. The reason that this particular project was put forward is it's number four in our priority list, and it's a pretty extensive criteria that we put it through, and it matched the criteria of the funding program. The particular trail that the council member is referring to, we are putting some final stages on a plan to remediate that trail. So we'll be back to you in short order.
And that'll be fixed in short order, did I hear?
It won't be fixed in short order. We'll be back to you in short order.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I see no further questions. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Item number five, do I have a mover? Counselor Marsh? Do we have any questions? Okay, Counselor Etherington?
I just wanted to note that item five in our report is on the wrong side of King. It's not in Ward nine, so it's in Ward 10.
Okay. Counselor, Counselor Yonetski? Oh, Counselor Marsh?
Yeah, I was going to point that out as well, and also just, I was surprised to see this report in our package because I felt that it's such a minor four-inch encroachment that I thought that this could be just a staff decision. I can, I was wondering why, why are we spending time on this? Is this important for, for a council to make a decision on?
Ms. McDonald?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. Currently, there's delegated authority to deal with certain encroachments, but unfortunately, because this is dealing with a new encroachment, there's no delegated authority to staff. So I'd be more than willing to put forward a resolution to seek delegated authority to staff to deal with some of these things, but we currently don't have that in place.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Yonetski?
Yeah, at the bottom of the page, the notion that the encroachment circulation process has gone through and there's no objections. However, there's still some outstanding comments yet to be received. From who?
Ms. McDonald?
Through you, Mr. Chair. It circulated to a number of agencies and staff. I just don't, I don't have those details with me. I can pass that on to you if you like through email, but it circulated quite broadly, and we'd just be waiting for some of the comments.
So is this not premature then, until we have all the comments?
Well, you'll see that we've made it at the very beginning of the recommendation that it's subject to obtaining all necessary approvals. So this is so we don't hold things up. They're anxious to get moving. This has been a long bone of contention in the downtown that these stairs haven't been addressed. And now that we have a party that wants to address them, we're just trying to expedite it on their behalf.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Gazola?
With all, with all of these encroachments, that there's an application fee and a process fee, is there not also a fee that covers the use of this?
We, through you, Mr. Chair, we have in the past, through different reports that have gone to council, sought categories where fees are charged, and because this is actually an encroachment on road allowance, council did not see fit to impose a fee, mainly because in a lot of cases, encroachments on road allowances are because of historical encroachments. This just happens to be a new one. So there is no fee that's been directed by council with respect to encroachments on highways.
Shouldn't there be a fee here?
That's really the wish of council. I would suggest to you that it's, can be problematic for the historical ones.
We have no further questions. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Move on to item number six. Do we have a mover for item number six?
Even have a question?
Moved by Mayor Verbanovic, and you're up for questions?
Thank you. Just one question, and it's probably not as much to this one as it is with respect to the encroachments in general. Are they restricted to only starting after like the long weekend in May or something? Because I noticed we've had nice weather and people have commented it would be great to have some of the patios open already to enjoy, and people don't appear to be able to do that yet. And so is there a restriction on these? Like this one or the other ones that I think along King Street?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'd have to get back to council with the specifics. I know that at one time we did have a start and end dates in the agreement, but they're perpetual agreements that roll over for the ones that have been here each year. And I know that people have been calling our offices, and there's been inquiries and so forth, and also to economic development. So I know things are moving. I just don't know if we currently have those deadlines as well.
Okay, can you maybe get a note to council just with respect to what those dates are? If we need to, in the future, bring forward a motion to change them? Or what do we need to do internally to sort of expedite getting them open at the start of the season? Because it would be, it would be great when, once the weather turns nice. And I agree, like, you have nice, you know, nice weather in March, you can't necessarily open them up. But I think by the time we get to May, probably could see them open or even April, you know, late April. So if you can-
I'll get back to council.
Counselor Yonetski's next.
Okay, Counselor Yonetski?
Yeah, to Ms. McDonald, this, this particular intent of the agreement would be on the right of way of Aaron Street, which is right at the railway tracks. And they're going to have a patio. So this use of a patio and the road allowance, is that something similar in terms of a-
So, this use of a patio and the road allowance, is that something similar in terms of arrangements? By this is on the street whereby the other ones we have in the downtown area where you have patios and chairs set up on sidewalks in the downtown area. Is this slightly different or has it same intent? Or is this sort of maybe even further? Because now we're talking the road itself or are we just talking the road allowance?
This particular patio is actually being proposed on the road allowance, not on the road itself. It would be a patio that could be moved if it had to be because there is some services below ground, so they can't actually put their fencing into the ground, but it's a movable patio if it should have become an issue. It's similar to the downtown patios, but not exactly the same because it's just on the outside edge of the downtown. So, when they get their permission for this particular patio, it's sort of indefinitely and it, you know, will continue for as long as the operator wants to maintain that patio.
Now, that patio and the location, I know what we're talking about, is right beside the train station. Is there any impact or any response from the C.N. or the V.R.L., whoever, from the railway people on this? I'm not sure whether it impacts them in any way or not.
The patio is 100% on private property beside the train station, so they'd be able to put that on their private property as long as they don't do anything to impede the train operation, which they shouldn't as it is on their private property.
Okay, thank you.
We have no further items and prior to, what's that? Oh, yeah, sorry. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. There are no further items?
It's dealing with item number seven-two. I don't have a problem with it, but when tenders or prepared staff prepare a report that we, and I was of the understanding that when the C.A.O. approves them, that we would get a copy of the report. We received a half-page summary, but I thought we would have gotten a copy of the full report.
Mr. Chapman, can you address that, please?
Through you, Mr. Chair. The resolution was not prescriptive, so we're in council's hands. If council wants to direct us to provide the full report, we can do that. If you prefer this format, we can continue with that as well. So, really, we look for council's direction on that issue.
I look, I will move that we get the full report. We're just asking for a couple of pages.
Okay, well, I'll accept that motion. All those in favor of that additional item? That's carried. Okay, there are, okay, all in favor? Opposed, that's carried. That the proceedings and the recorded pecuniary interests and conflicts taken in the meeting of the Committee of the Whole held this date as attached hereto and forming part of these minutes are hereby adopted and confirmed, which is moved by Ms. Altham, seconded by Counselor Schneider. All those in favor?
No, I, all those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. And it's been moved by Counselor Gazola, seconded by Counselor Marsh, that the bylaws listed on the agenda for third reading be taken as read a third time with the addition be finally passed and numbered seriously by the clerk. All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. And it's been moved by Counselor Etherington, seconded by Counselor Galloway-Seelock, that we adjourn. All in favor? Opposed, that's carried.